The city council meeting this evening, it's an honor to be here. And we'll go ahead and get started with the pledge of allegiance. If you'll please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance, then we'll continue with our invocation this evening brought by Pastor Flannoy. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eternal God and kind Father, we thank you for your blessings that you bestowed upon us this day. We pray your blessings over this city council meeting and over the suggestions and plans that we made today. We pray your blessings over our mayor and the city council and their assistance. We pray your blessings over the fire department and the police department, over the first responders and our military. We ask you to bless this meeting, and after the meeting is over, see that we get home safely and find everything that we left, just as we left it. Lord, teach us to love one another and lead us not in temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever, we are praying. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. That's very nice. One of the high honors of being mayor of Bonner Springs is being able to bring the proclamations. And this is quite a noteworthy historic event in Bonner Springs history. Whereas Bonner Springs was initially established in eighteen twelve as four houses trading post. And whereas John McDaniel later changed the name to Tyblo in honor of Henry Tyblo, who operated the ferry crossing. And whereas Philo Clark later changed the name to Bonner Springs to bring attention to the medicinal and healing springs in the area. And whereas the community continued to grow and boasted both industry and leisure, Bonner Springs petitioned to become a city. And whereas on November tenth, eighteen ninety-eight, the city of Bonner Springs was incorporated. And in nineteen hundred, the population was one thousand and twenty-five, and commercial, civic, and recreational opportunities were abundant. And whereas in the nineteen sixties, a new bridge over the Kansas River was constructed, and Bonner Springs experienced significant growth. And whereas today, our population is just under eight thousand, we are the only city in Kansas with geographic boundaries in three counties. The city of Bonner Springs is poised for growth in many sectors due to our close proximity to the Kansas City metropolitan area and abundant transportation corridors. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, mayor of the city of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim November tenth, twenty twenty-three, as Bonner Springs quasi-quincentennial day in this Bonner Springs and urge community members to join us in celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years and to take every opportunity to look to the future while celebrating our heritage. Congratulations, Bonner Springs. And here.
Terry Lewis, Mashburn, three hundred Walnut Street, Lansing, sorry, Leavenworth, Kansas. And I'm Register of Deeds for Leavenworth County. So greetings from our courthouse and happy birthday to you. I actually have two things I'd like to share with you tonight. Had a conversation with a realtor on Saturday whose closing had to be delayed because when they got to doing the title work, found out that the owners had a thirty-six thousand dollar HELOC loan on their home, and they had no idea how it got there. Title theft is one of the fastest growing crimes that is hitting all over America. And my discovery of that made it the thirty-second case I know of in Leavenworth County. The reason I say I know of is it takes years sometimes to find out about it. And not only in Leavenworth County, but in Wyandotte County, we have what's called property fraud alert. This is a free notification syst- service that's offered to any landowner. And if they live in Wyandotte County, they can contact the Register of Deeds there. They can contact myself in Leavenworth County. It's confidential, there's no marketing emails or phone calls, and it's free. So I strongly recommend you to sign up for that. Had that couple had this service, they'd have known about that mortgage being put on them immediately. And the Register of Deeds office isn't well-known by most people, but it is an important office. And one of our main things is we manage all of the land history. And most of our land history was on microfilm up until just a few months ago. And we are celebrating with a ribbon cutting Wednesday morning, eight fourteen in the morning. If you ask why, we're accommodating our Board of County Commissioners meeting that meets at nine o'clock. So they have to be scooting out of my office and up to their council chambers. So I'm going to leave the invitation with you. I did resort to email because some of these got lost in the mail. But I just want to say thank you for your service, and if I can ever be of service to you, please contact my office anytime.
To the mayor and the city council, my name is David Flannoy Senior. I'm the pastor of the Church of the Living out at three hundred North Garfield Street. It used to be Reams Park Baptist Church for some years. But on the card that you should have in front of you says, get the word out. Within Bonner Springs is a ministerial alliance. And inside of the ministerial alliance is a thing called the Bonner Builders. And we're trying to get the word out that we would like to help the folks of Bonner. If you open that one pamphlet in front of you, the benefits of this is the blight prevention, maintaining property value, bringing people together, helping some people stay in their homes. And we ministers in the Bonner Builders would like to just help the citizens of Bonner with small carpentry work. Those steps need to be tightened up, handrails need to be tightened up, ramps need to be built, back porches need to be stabilized. We're not trying to remodel the house or anything, but we're trying to get the word out that the ministers in Bonner Springs are looking for volunteers to help with the work and volunteers help get the word out. Perhaps there's some young men at the high school or perhaps that you know somewhere that are looking for volunteers because most of us ministers in our late sixties and seventies, but we're doing the best we can helping the citizens. So we just want to get the word out that Bonner Builders within the ministerial alliance would like to help the citizens of Bonner Springs with small carpentry work.
Thank you so much. I'm sure we'll make mention of that to our code enforcement that might be able to help some individuals stay in their homes as well as emergency services and police need that information as well. So thank you.
Connie Swafford, nine oh one, South one hundred and thirty-first Street. I had recently had talked with code enforcement of a new people, a new family that had moved into Deerfield. Their entire driveway looked like a storage unit, cars that had tarps on them, three boats, two boats, sorry, trailer. And I was told pretty much his hands are tied. So I would like to maybe get this council to take and work maybe with code enforcement to change some of the ordinance to where their hands aren't as tied. And if I need to do something to help in getting that going, then I'd be happy to do that.
Reviewing the codes in regards to.
Well, basically, if you've got boats this time of year, you're not using them. I understand if you want to keep your boats and your RVs and all that in the summer months when you're using them. But in the summer month and the winter months, I'm sorry, it's you're just using it for storage.
Review the outdoor storage of recreational vehicles. Thank you very much, ma'am. Anyone else that would like to stand and address the city council? Items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along to our consent agenda this evening. The consent agenda this evening includes the minutes of the October twenty-third city council meeting. Claims for city operations, civil transit title. Six? Policy approval? speaks volumes, doesn't it? And public use request for the holiday parade and mayor's tree lighting. Anything to be pulled by the staff? No. Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none. Anything to be pulled by the council? I entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. So moved by Mrs. Woodson, seconded by Mr. Shannon. Vote, please.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes, with an extension on check number one five two two eight eight.
Yep.
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Very good. Onto our first item of new business. Concerns regarding the water meter upgrade status. Staff?
I want to say a few things first. Frank Abarth, Public Works Director. Not much new to report since the last time, but essentially we have completed the reconciliation of accounts in October. We continue to have staff to the limits of our resources any way out actually taking pictures of each meter and going through a process like that to make sure that we are as accurate as humanly possible on these meter reads. In fact, last Friday was a holiday. We had people who were out working on that holiday. Had people working yesterday, as a matter of fact, on Sunday, trying to get this caught up and to stay on task. So we are committing resources to this. We're going to continue to committing resources to this until such time as we have the technology solution that would not require this. We're hoping that comes before there's snow and ice. We're thinking about that at this time of year, of course. The additional comments that I have for you tonight would be with Mr. Harden, Dan Harden with Innovative Utility Solutions. He's representing the organization that has sold us the units, and he's going to give us an update this evening. He was not able to be here in person, but we have him on the screen if you unmute him. Dan, you have the floor if you can hear me.
Yes, I can hear you.
We're going to have to turn the volume up at our end, I think.
Okay, can you hear me any better? Try again.
Yeah. Can you give us a count?
Yeah, I can hear you. Can you hear me any better? Little bit. Let me try one more speaker here. Okay, can you hear me now?
That might be as good as it gets. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so Frank, do you want me to just kind of explain what we talked about a little bit earlier?
Yes, that'd be great. Anything you have to say would be better than anything I could say.
Okay, fair enough, fair enough. So yeah, it's definitely not Frank's fault, obviously. So the manufacturer that we work with, Smarter Technologies, originally about three months ago, discovered a firmware issue in their radios. So what they did is they halted all shipments of radios until they could confirm that that firmware was fixed, which they ultimately did. Once they fixed the firmware, they went back to their contract manufacturer based in Atlanta and asked that contract manufacturer to basically pay for the issues that were caused by the firmware. Basically, their manufacturing created the firmware issue. And so the contract manufacturer basically said, no, that's not our problem, we're not going to fix it. So as a result, they stopped shipping product and stopped asking them to ship product. Now, none of this became obvious or evident to us until about a week ago, when I finally offered to buy the company to kind of draw out some answers and potentially become an owner of SET. So once we discovered what was actually going on, it turns out that Smarter Technologies or SET has now stood up their own manufacturing facility. So that way they're in control of it now, rather than the third party that they've been working with. That manufacturing facility should be up and running probably within the next two months. But the contract manufacturer still has eighteen thousand radios that they produced for Smarter. Now, Smarter has agreed to purchase those and begin distributing those to the customers, of which Bonner Springs is on the top of that list to get seventeen hundred radios, we're told, within the next two weeks. So once we got to the bottom of the issue and they solved all their problems, now it sounds like everything should be coming to a head and we should have a resolution with product shipping within two weeks.
Any questions?
So I, we really do apologize for the delay. I've expressed my frustration with Smarter. And I've explained to them that Bonner Springs is simply just not happy with the situation, and I'm very unhappy with the situation. But you guys are on the top of the list. You will be the first shipment of these radios that we get from them, which again is going to be within two weeks. So again, it's, it's just been a terrible cascading set of events that I feel could have been avoided had they reached out to each other, you know, six months ago. But we are where we are, and I think we have a resolution now, so we should have some product shipping out within two weeks. Well, we appreciate you standing up and making those commitments to do that. That's more than what we've heard in the last nine months or more, and so we appreciate that. What, what confidence do you have in this product now being able to do what it's professed to do? So I have a hundred percent confidence. And one of the main reasons I have that is because of the unit we have in Bonner Springs. You know, we installed these several months ago, and they haven't had a single glitch, not one gone down for the day. They've been operating at a hundred percent. And we also installed three or four other customers at the same time, and all of those are operating at a hundred percent. So what we found out the firmware issue was, was on the two series, which is the previous series of radios that they made that were not the ones that you got found. So that's what they were concerned about was these old radios. They have about one out of twenty that are dying prematurely. And they were concerned that this new product, which had the same firmware, was going to create the same issue. And so now they've been thoroughly tested, the firmware's been upgraded, and so I U S has a hundred percent confidence in this new product.
Dan, I have a question. What is your confidence level in these actually showing up before Thanksgiving? Or even after Thanksgiving within that week?
My confidence level as of today is probably eighty-five percent. Now, that will go to ninety-five to a hundred percent probably tomorrow or the next day because we have a guy on the ground with the corporate office in Australia right now who is talking about all this stuff right now. So again, I put it at eighty-five percent right now, but after probably, you know, lunchtime in Australia right now. So they're having their meetings as we speak. I would be able to move that needle up to ninety-five to a hundred percent probably in the next forty-eight hours.
I would appreciate an email if that needle moves.
Any other questions?
It's been a rough several months for the citizens, for finance, for public works, for you folks. I'm hoping really that we're at a point where we see the end of the, end of the line here and soon. So beyond that, I really don't have anything else to add. I'm very glad that Dan was able to express this from, from him, not from me. So beyond that, we're ready to go, I guess.
I appreciate that too, and just your recognition that we're at the top of the list. I don't even want to know how long that list is. Really, what concerns me are the citizens of Bonner Springs. And I appreciate you making this video appearance and letting us know your, how important it is to you to convey that to us. So I appreciate that. I really take this as, very personally, I think it was a big part to do. I take a lot of blame in this myself because I didn't ask the questions that I should have been asking upfront. And a lot of this miscommunication on our end on how it was received out to the public, I think, falls on me. And I think that's significant. We'll, we'll ask much better questions on public improvements in the future and get much more specifics. And this is a hard lesson to learn, but I think we took a lot of things at face value. And this has helped us to recognize that may not be the case or as, as the manner in which we need to proceed. So I thank you for putting your name on the line, Dan. And that challenges us and the city of Bonner Springs to be better consumers and ask these questions so we can convey it to the citizens better. So thank you. Yeah, and to be fair, if I may add one thing, when I and my counterpart Bruce Beaver with Smarter, we came in and presented, gosh, you know, six, seven months ago, we had plenty of inventory. They were shipping out product, you know, to the tune of five thousand a week. Everything was flowing wonderfully. And so Frank and Chuck asked those very quietly. And at the time, we gave them the answers that we had of, yes, we have plenty, these things are flowing great. And then ironically or coincidentally, as soon as we got the eighty installed for Chuck and Frank, that well just dried up on us without us knowing about it. So, so your team did a great job at asking all the questions, and we gave them all the answers we had at the time. We just happened to be wrong. Thank you, Dan. Anything else? Thank you, Frank.
Yep, thanks. Dan, I think we're done.
Okay, thank you. If you guys need anything else, please feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a great evening.
Yep.
Very good. Nothing else on item number one with the water meter upgrade? We'll move along to item number two, a change order for the community center window project.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Nathan Brungart with the Bonner Springs Parks and Recreation Department. I'm asking that you approve a change order for the community center window replacement project with time key glazing and the amount of twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. This project will replace the majority of the windows on the southwest side of the building. And that will replace our senior center director's window, which has a leak, a compromised door over here to the side, and then the fogged window also right out here. Are there any questions I can answer about this project?
Thank you very much. Any other staff to input? No? Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, a motion to accept, I make a motion to accept the change order for the additional window replacement in the lower level of the community center from time key glazing for twenty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Reeves. And we'll start down here with questions, concerns, comments, sir?
Yeah, as I read through this, it looks like that the twenty-nine thousand is something that was not even in the previous bid. Is that correct?
That.
Is this something that we have asked for afterward because we've seen a need there also, or is?
Correct.
That's what I'm taking it?
Yes, so the original bid was for the upper level. I thought we had a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to do this entire project. And if you look at that bid, a hundred and twenty thousand got us pretty close for the upper level. And we tend to have to have some extra funds because this project was carried over a couple of years. And that's what we can afford with this lower level.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any questions here?
Pictures, photos make a difference.
Thank you.
You had mentioned having the windows tinted, that that was because of the fogging issues. Is it, perhaps maybe it's just the aging of the windows, so is tinting, was that the best or?
Correct.
Yes, as far as economics goes and so forth.
Correct. So the window tinting that's currently on those windows is what you would find in a car from the late nineties in an aftermarket scenario. It's just a film that's put on. So if there's any moisture in that window, it hits that film and it reflects back, causing that to fog up. I do have a sample of the new window with me this evening that I'm more than happy to talk to people about after the meeting. And that tint is actually englazed in the glass, so that should not happen.
Those windows are from the last renovation, right? How many years ago was that?
So the windows we're going to replace, I believe, are the nineteen eighties on the lower level. The ones on the upper level are original to the building.
Sounds like we got our wear out of them.
Yeah, we got our money's, money's worth out of them.
That's good.
Hey, regarding the door, what was wrong with that, about fifteen nineteen eighty?
Yeah. So, so we have an issue where the door is not latching properly. Should this not get approved, I am working with Scott on a remedy to get that fixed. But if we could replace it, it'd be a little more economical. It would help long-term with that entrance.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? This completes all of the windows in the community center?
This does not. This is just going to be this side of the building over here. As you work your way around, we have some other issues with those windows. They were installed in the eighties, and I believe that they were installed by someone who didn't have a background in commercial windows. And with those windows, rain is supposed to hit the pane, go down and drain out the bottom. But those drain holes at some point were cocked, so water's not able to escape. So that's caused some other issues with how the windows are sitting. And we want to look a little bit more before we open up the rest of the building for that.
So the, the windows on that side, which is kind of south?
Yes, sir.
Both levels?
Uh, just the lower level.
Just the lower level? The upper level's okay?
Upper level is the original windows, and that's part of the original scope.
Okay, that's, so just the ones on the lower level on the south side?
The southwest side, yes, sir.
The one that's out by where I park?
So the one, if you were to exit out the side door here, it'd be the square window, that door, and then those three windows right there.
We're doing but around the corner?
We are not touching those yet.
That's what I call the south, towards the river. Uh huh.
We'll still be into the sunflower room windows, all of those which wrap around to the east side of the building. And then also the bison room, that will be new windows as well, and that should pretty much be a solid window.
That's in through the sunflower room, that back room, or those casement windows on that level? But just that level? On the sunflower and bison room? Has, I was trying to?
Well, I apologize for the confusion.
Nope, nope. I'm sure it was well documented. Anything else? Seeing nothing, I entertain a motion, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Tip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Very good. Congratulations. On to the next item, which is the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, Central Park Amendment.
Hi, good evening, mayor and city council, Justine Spees, Recreation Manager. Before you tonight is the rec, or the, before you tonight is the Center Park Master Plan addition for recommendation of approval to add that as an amendment to the existing Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which was adopted back in twenty nineteen. As requested by the city council, we did put out a community survey to everyone online asking about what type of amenities everyone would like to see installed at that Center Park location. The top three amenities requested from the community included a splash pad, inclusive playground, and pickleball courts. Additional considerations for that location as recommended or recommended by the community included restrooms, shade, drinkable, drinking fountains, either for fountain or bottle fill-up station, trash receptacles, and ample seating space. And a lot of the write-in responses highlighted the need for space to be inclusive for all community members. So not just the very young or the very old, but everyone in between. There were a hundred and thirty-four residents who participated in that survey, and Land Works Studio, who did our original master plan, did complete the drawing and mock-up for Center Park. They included cost estimates and just kind of like a vision of what that park could look like in the future. I'd be happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Good, thank you. Any staff? Questions or concerns from the citizens? Seeing none, I entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the Center Park Amendment as presented.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens, and we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon. Questions, concerns, comments?
I believe I was out of town in the, possibly the evening you presented this or you talked about it. Could you please explain to me what?
I've got an idea of what a splash pad is, but yeah.
All right, so a splash pad, it would be a free water play, basically. It'd be an all-inclusive surface. People could, let's see here, on the drawing over here, it's circular, but we can practically design this however we wanted. Make it look like a very, it's going to be a great destination for the community members, and it'll be usable by any member of the community, really. As far as the filtration system, we'll talk more about that with Public Works on what their thoughts and things are, because they will need to have some input on that as well, but think sprinklers everywhere and buckets. It's a lot of fun.
Yeah. Let me try to see if my wife will run through it.
Yep.
Also, because of the park design, and there were other amenities that were not at this point included, can they be included? One or some, or are there any, are there any other plans? And anything to this part?
Yes, absolutely, and thank you for bringing that up. Pickleball courts, they were the number three top requested item. I had asked for that in our capital improvement plan, but talking with Johnson County and the issues that they've had with their pickleball courts and the lawsuits, we've decided that maybe North Park would be the better location for that installation. So we are thinking of putting pickleball courts near the sand volleyball courts there at North Park. And for the inclusive playground, number two high need, I know our park board is very passionate about that project. Going forward, any playground updates, they are going to be, have that inclusive aspect to them. So whenever those come up in the capital improvement project, I hope that is well supported.
I'm very glad to see native planting and the trees, the attention to the obstacles.
Yeah, I was very happy with the design and layout, and like Mr. Shannon down there, I'm kind of glad pickleball court, courts weren't included because I don't know if you've heard some of the stories nationally, they're, it's become a real problem in communities because of the extreme loud rhythmic sound constantly, these things going on late into the evenings, and I guess there's a lot of households are having issues with it. Kind of glad they weren't included at this point in time, so, thank you.
Um, the splash park, those are set up so that the water features activate when somebody's using the park usually?
Usually, yes.
Normal, twenty-four seven, without anybody there?
Yes, a good example of that is actually Eagles Landing at Lake Olathe, I believe it is. You actually push a sensor and then the fountains come on. And it's, that's another part of like that interaction with the kids and stuff, like how can they interact with the water? They can control every aspect of it, so it can be very customizable.
And, and those are considered inclusive as well because of the surfaces that they're, they take place on?
Some of theirs is inclusive, yes. We want all of ours to be inclusive, or at least somewhat accessible. That way we can, any age can play with each other. They have some really cool drain-through pour surfaces that are available that meet those standards and.
Field chair accessible?
Yes.
And no need for lifeguards with a splash park?
That's correct.
Pretty self-service.
Insurance would not require that.
Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Entertain, are we have a motion on the floor? Vote, please.
Mike Mahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations. This is another opportunity for Bonner Springs to see the quality of life improvements that Parks and Rec are helping to make come true right there. Certainly the most most seen park in Bonnersburg. Going on to the next item, item number four, the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation Agreement for One Twenty Oak M I H dash A R P A Funds.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Megan Gilliland. I'm your Economic Development Coordinator. Tonight, we have an agreement between the city of Bonner Springs and Kansas Housing Resources Corporation. This is for the One Twenty Oak project at the old Thriftway site. As you hopefully recall, this summer, they were awarded a one-point-seven million dollar grant to develop fifty moderate-income housing units plus fifty market rate units, so it's a total of a hundred units. And the breakdown of that is thirty-one studio apartments, forty-six one-bedroom apartments, and twenty-three two-bedroom apartments. As per this agreement, the construction is set to start in April of twenty twenty-four and be completed by November of twenty twenty-five. The city will work with the developers to file quarterly reports with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation based on the progress of the project. And there is also an Exhibit C in your packet. There is a dispersment schedule that we will follow based on certain timelines and percentages complete for the project. After we complete this agreement and provide that to Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, staff has some work to do with the developers. We will be working on a developer agreement, and we will also be working with them to discuss other public issues such as parking and the street and, you know, enforcement possibly of timing on the street or something like that. But we do have a development agreement that will come back to you for more local-based issues. And I'm available for questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. Anything to add by other staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve an agreement with the Kansas Housing Resources Corporation, K H R C, for M I H dash A R P A Funds.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens, so we'll start right here with Mrs. Woods. Do you have any questions or concerns?
No, I would like to know if they're going to look like that picture right now.
That's the, that's the current iteration I have from the developers. Since we created that FAQ document, there's been some changes. You know, the numbers on the studio versus one-bedroom versus two-bedroom have changed a little bit. They have, they reworked a lot of their plan to get ninety-seven surface lots for parking on their postage stamp-sized lot. And so that kind of changed the, the model a little bit, but yes, I believe it will very much look like a high-quality project. They have design standards that they have to follow in the, in the downtown as well. And these individuals aren't, they're, they're local and owners on the street as well, so they want it to look and complement our downtown. I think one thing that will be incredibly beneficial for the view is that the, as where the old Thriftway and Dollar General sat back on the street, this all, this pulls everything out to the front of Oak, just like the remainder of the street.
No, but I'm just glad to see the project continuing to move forward.
My thoughts exactly, thank you.
I, I love it. I think it's a great idea. So it's the first floor, and then there's three stories up, so it's four stories altogether, correct?
The Board of Zoning Appeals on September nineteenth approved the four stories, so the first floor, well, let's just start with the four stories. They approved, approved four stories. And then the parking ratio is going, we're going to handle the parking, or the need for additional parking that they can't handle on the ninety-seven lots. We're going to handle that through a development agreement with the city and the developers through using some of our public parking around the area. And then the third zoning appeal that they had was to not have to use the entire first floor for commercial. And so the plan right now is that they'll use, I'm going to say seventy-five percent of it for residential use, specifically along front and in the back of the building. But then the front on Oak will have like their gym, their leasing office, and then they have what I'm going to call flex space. And that will be space that if they can find a commercial tenant sometime in the future, then a commercial tenant could go in there, but it'll be probably like a community space, but it'll look commercial from the street. And so those are the three appeals that had to get through BZA to get to this point.
I think this is a shot in the arm for like our restaurants in town. And in terms of parking, sometimes you just got to let that, it's organic. You got to let it work itself out, right? Potentially, there'll be some residents of Bonner that can take smaller vehicles like golf carts or something downtown if they want to and open up some availability.
You are looking into the future.
I am, very futuristic here, but I, I just think this is great. This is going to be a huge plus for Bonner. And then there's, because you take some of these restaurants and you look on the backside, you know, they can create parking on the other side, right?
Yeah, I think there's going to have to be a lot of conversation that happens between now and really March, to be honest with you, because March is where they're going to block off, if not sooner, the parking lot to start construction. And so people who are used to parking in that Thriftway lot that technically they're not supposed to, but the owners have not ticketed them or towed them, they'll need to park on the street on Oak. Or, you know, I would encourage definitely restaurants and other businesses that if they have availability for back parking, that they, you know, make sure that those are easily accessible for people, and they encourage people for takeout orders and things like that to use their back. But, you know, Oak Street can handle, Oak Street can handle the parking. We're going to make sure that people aren't taking advantage of the public parking on Oak Street. But, you know, we'll just work with people. Change is hard, and I understand that, but I really strongly believe that this project is going to be a game changer for downtown.
A hundred percent. I like it, because there's already lots here in town, right? You see people park on Oak Street, so it's just, I mean, it's a small percentage, but.
I get calls weekly on people wanting to buy buildings in downtown, wanting to develop apartments and things like that, because housing is a really big deal for our community, and this is going to put a hundred units of workforce housing in our community. That will be great for teachers. You know, people who are between that thirty-seven thousand dollars and a hundred and seven thousand dollars will qualify for those M I H apartments, and then market rate for everything else.
The worst-case scenario, somebody might have to park over here to go eat somewhere right on Oak Street, and that's okay. You're going to, you go downtown, Tennessee, Missouri, or wherever, you do it all day long.
Yeah, I had to walk four blocks in Indianapolis, so, I know. And we enjoyed a lot of public art as we walked, too.
We're going to get there one of these. That's all I have. Thank you, Meg.
Yep.
Maybe, maybe you could tell me about the first major of the course, low-cost housing, and anytime we've been talking about this, other areas, apartments, the first thing that comes out is low-cost housing. I've noticed that they've been, there's been three terms that have been used on this, affordable, moderate, and market rate. Could you explain?
Well, I think that the word affordable has been kind of hijacked by low-income, specifically like Lytech projects. And so this project is specifically termed a moderate-income housing project. The state put a lot of their ARPA dollars into moderate income, not Lytech, which is your low-income housing tax credits. And so this is built for, or the moderate income is specifically for individuals. If it's one person who lives there, they can make between thirty-seven thousand dollars and a hundred and seven thousand dollars. And then if it's two people, the numbers go up. But actually, in Windout County, it has a much wider income swing than it does in other parts of the state. So I would use the term, when I'm talking about it, I use the word moderate, or I use workforce, because workforce is really something that, you know, is people who have, you know, a tech, have like a, have a technical position or have a professional position, and they're looking for housing.
I was looking at the, the, the Kansas Housing, moderate-income housing, and they use the N that. Term, and I was trying to decipher it, so I will stop by and have you kind of explain it to me.
Yeah.
I was trying to figure out the figures here, so.
That, on that sheet that we put out, that has the table.
Right.
And that, I think, is the most explanatory document that I have for who can, who can qualify for the.
I just want to make sure that you understand.
Yep.
I would like to know how this is going to affect the school district.
At this time, we're not expecting it to have a big impact on the school district because, first of all, these are studio, one, and two bedrooms. So they're not expecting a large influx of children to be living in these apartments. They're really targeting, again, young professionals who are just getting out of high school or college and getting ready to start their careers. They're targeting retirees who may have a large home, and they, they want to downsize and not have any maintenance. And so those two big populations won't come necessarily with children to start off with. So right now, we're not predicting it to have a big impact. In fact, we've talked to the school district specifically about this when we were applying for it, and they wrote a letter of support, especially because they have a lot of teachers who have either turned them down for positions in Bonner or can't find housing in the district.
I've noticed in the configuration of the parking lot there, I hope they will continue to make it look as good as this looks here, because we've been involved with some other things, and I was made aware of the parking lot, the way it looked, and with some little green areas that this is showing here. And those didn't happen, and so I'm, I hope they'll continue to have those kinds of things in there. It really makes a parking lot look a whole lot nicer if those areas are there and taken care of.
I will pass that along to them. I know that they are trying to maximize the number of surface lots for their tenants on that, on that space. And so I know they've had conversations about like where to place trash bins and things like that with like the property just due west of them, and so they have to fit certain things on there. I know one thing that they're definitely planning on, on having their, having on their lot is some sort of a, like a pet-friendly area for people to take their dogs and not go to Kelly Murphy Park and stuff like that. So we've already had that conversation with them about needing to make sure that, you know, they contain a lot of that on their, on their space.
I see that first benchmark is fifteen percent completed, and that includes the city approvals, permits, and financing secured with a dis, dispersment of half a million dollars. Do you have any idea when you expect to have that, or would that be before the April time period, or?
Hmm, yeah, I'm not sure. Well, like I said, I know that we need to come back to you with a development agreement. This is also an R H I D project as well, rural or revitalized incentive housing project, or whatever name they've changed it to. And so you'll also have an R H I D development agreement coming towards, toward, to the council as well. Um, ideally, I'd love to package as much of that together on one night as I can. Um, but I don't have a, they haven't given me a timeline, date-wise. They're just kinda looking at it by percentages. Sean, do you have?
Approvals will be included in this to have to make before the benchmark of that fifteen percent.
They will, they will need to have things like a site and landscape plan, which I think is, um, some of the comments tonight have kinda focused on that aspect of it. So what you're seeing on, on the paper today may not be necessarily exactly what it looks like because again, it needs to go through that process both, uh, internally as well through, uh, as with the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, I would anticipate that we would have most of the other financial arrangements, agreements done, but I'm not sure that's necessarily what this, um, agreement is speaking to as far as a development agreement is, uh, is concerned. It's more about the approval to actually build or construct the project, so a building permit being issued. Um, but again, that, that's, um, contingent upon having the, the site and landscape completed. So I wouldn't, I would again, think that the site and landscape and the planning, uh, the community development pieces will come probably in the first part of twenty-twenty-four and then shortly thereafter. As Megan said, you'd probably have, um, any other, uh, agreements, development agreement or similar financial agreement coming probably within that same kind of March, uh, April timeframe, um, just to, I think, make sure that everything is, is packaged, like Megan said, uh, together and not having to deal with this on too many different occasions.
And I appreciate that sometime in the first quarter would be great in having this first benchmark, uh, cause, um, that's really the point of no, no return, right? That, that first dispersment. Uh, we're, um, we're approving now this, uh, these ARPA funds and one point seven million that the city will receive on behalf of this and we're administering that.
Yes.
As far as cost to the city, how much of the city's money is involved in this?
For this part of the project, um, what we're talking about, about tonight with the meeting household income, uh, funds, there's no city money involved, um, with that. Uh, as you alluded to, there is, there has been a question raised about the ARPA funds because there are certain requirements and reporting. We have been assu- assured by, um, uh, the Kansas Housing Resource Corporation that this is not necessarily ARPA funding. It was, it was funding coming from ARPA because funding was relieved somewhere else. So it's, it's kind of a, uh, it's all over the board, but at the end of the day, um, that reporting requirement isn't necessarily the case. We may have to deal with the circular audit, federal audit, but we're likely gonna have to do that anyway as far as a cost is concerned. Whenever we go over seven hundred thousand in a year, seven fifty, um, we have to do it another audit, which is a few thousand dollars to complete that. Um, but as far as, um, anything to do with this project, that's, or rather this, uh, item tonight, that's, that's really it. That is not to say that there aren't, uh, haven't been, um, initial requests or suggestions about, um, relief in other areas, um, be it permit fees or, or impact fees or those types of things. But again, that's, those are the items that get put into that development agreement, which ultimately comes back to the city council for approval. Um, but I'm thinking again that the process being that we would hopefully get, um, the planning and the community development pieces complete, uh, and then we know how to put together a development agreement within probably the latter part of the first quarter of twenty-twenty-four.
Those, uh, I, that was the point I was trying to make. We're not out of pocket anything other than indirect costs of the, the city's personnel and staff trying to help assist this, uh, property owner, property owners with this development and applying for this grant. And as far as a development agreement, usually all the time, those are done with not necessarily money out of pocket, but just maybe not, uh, requiring as much participation by the developer with, uh, building permits or whatever. So we don't foresee, uh, supporting this with any financial outlay.
No, like I'm using staff time to help with the quarterly reports and, you know, I assisted with the grant with, you know, just my position.
Indirectly, but no.
Yeah, no, no, no allocation and budget for it.
That's what I was looking for. Very good. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Wong?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Congratulations. This is another hurdle along the way of this very important one hundred unit development in downtown Bonner Springs. Vital to our community. Uh, the next hurdle, what do you foresee as the next hurdle?
Well, I think just coming back with the development agreement, um, will be important. Um, like I said, when I talk to residents and when I talk to business owners, the top concern they have is parking because, um, even though it's not public parking now, people see that lot as public parking in a lot of ways. And so, you know, we need to do our best to address, um, additional parking for both tenants. I mean, the, the developers have already said that they will work with their property management group to make sure that, you know, each unit gets a, uh, I'm gonna call it a sticker or a placard or something that has to go in their cars for their onsite. But, you know, if they have two vehicles, it might be that the second vehicle has to park in a public parking lot. And so we'll probably need to look at signage, um, and kind of reserving those spots for the development. Um, I foresee Kelly Murphy Park being used as a, a place where, um, they move from the public parking lot to the development. And so, you know, maybe we'll look at things like lighting and improvements in that park with the developers. Um, we've had conversations with them about, um, you know, they, they know about like their, their, their impact fees and things like that. And that's in the budget that's in your packet actually. But, you know, it's a tight project. In fact, I know the developers told me there for a few weeks, their project had actually gone up to twenty million and they were working to get it back down to seventeen, cause seventeen's their budget. Um, and so, you know, they're just dealing with the, the co- cost of construction and things like that as well. But, um, they're committed to getting it done and they've secured their financing and they have their general contractor and they're ready to. I mean, it, they, I've seen them over there taking core samples the last couple of weeks. Um, and Wiley said that he was pleased not to find anything scary in those core samples, so that was good. But, um, you know, I think that it's just, uh, again, change is hard. I know it's hard, um, and people don't necessarily like to hear me say that. But I, I think you have to look at what is the benefit that's coming to our community from this? Um, and it, it's just gonna put a density in downtown that we need to, to support the businesses, the services and the core of our community. And so, uh, we're, we're, we're working forward to, looking forward to that. I think the other challenge will be is we do have to do the RHID agreement, which do, um, you know, that's the property tax abatement to allow them to use some funding for vertical construction. And that has to have some approvals to that, so we need to make sure that we can get through that process too. Because this is a unique project in the fact that we've not only got the grant, which is wonderful, that's state money, not local. And, um, then, you know, we're able to layer it with the RHID project.
Yeah, the only thing I was gonna just mention is, just a point of reference is the RHID process. We, we had, this would be the second project where we've had an RHID, so the Sandstone Apartments off of one hundred and thirtieth Street north of Feldman's was, um, an RHID, um, project. So from just a frame of reference, uh, in terms of the timeframe, that's, uh, that would be a comparable situation from at least what we've done in the past and, and what we would kind of proceed with, uh, with this project as well.
Very good. Well, thank you and, uh, I wish you and them and the whole community the best of luck. Good, thank you. Moving along to number five, item number five, the resolution to transfer the firefighters from keepers to KPNF. I would imagine they mean the benefits for the firefighters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly Loplan, Finance Director. Um, we're asking you to pass a resolution to transfer our firefighters from our keepers, uh, Kansas Public Employees Retirement System to the Kansas, um, Police and Fire Retirement System. This was discussed during our twenty-twenty-four budget sessions, um, with going to full-time firefighters. Um, when they were volunteer, we didn't really, we, they couldn't be on K, uh, KPNF. So this, um, puts our current firefighters and the future ones that we will be hiring in the KPNF system. Our police department has been on KPNF, I think, since the sixties or something. Um, so this resolution is irrevocable and it has to be passed by two-thirds of the council. Um, so we're requesting passage of that tonight.
Very good. Any other staff?
Uh, just, uh, additional note, Tilly kinda mentioned it, but this was a planned, uh, part of the transition for the fire department going to a, a career model. So, uh, this is gonna amount to about a two-hundred thousand dollar change, uh, in the budget, uh, for this, this process to occur. Uh, but again, that is something that has been incorporated into the twenty-twenty-four budget, uh, and then would need to be, uh, put in moving forward, so.
Very good. Any other staff that wants to address this issue? Okay, good. Any other citizens? Questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the resolution to enroll all eligible current and future firefighters employed by the City of Bonner Springs in the Kansas Police and Fire Retirement System effective January first, twenty-twenty-four.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Kip and seconded by?
Pick one, flip it going.
Mr. Stevens. Uh, and we'll start with questions and concerns right down here. Mr. Reeves?
Nothing here. I'm glad, glad we're, we're seeing this. I know it's gonna be a little bit of a cost to us, but, uh, um, I, I still remember way back years ago when, when the officers talked, police officers talked about being part of KPNF cause you don't want a sixty-year-old police officer out chasing somebody and, and the thing, same thing, I would say, would apply to the firefighters. Hey, don't worry, we're all up there, or a bunch of us are. Uh, but you don't want a firefighter having to worry about trying to climb a ladder at sixty years old. So they need to have a system that allows them to retire a little bit earlier, so I'm glad to be moving forward with that.
Great addition, thanks. I agree with everyone. Uh, I don't really think this costs it pays. Uh, the dividends that we'll receive from this are being able to, uh, uh, provide for the city of Bonner Springs a modern, uh, career-oriented fire department, which, uh, although the, the volunteers have served us extremely well, um, the time for this has come, so thank you very much. Uh, any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, vote please.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Unanimous. Onto the next item, uh, I, ordinance number six, an ordinance to allow the operation of AN, all-terrain vehicle, micro utility truck, low-speed vehicle, golf cart or worksite utility vehicle.
Good evening. How are you all doing? I'm Captain Kraus of the Police Department. And I've got Hal Wirick, the city attorney, here to answer maybe some of those questions that were more legal last time than when we brought this to you. Uh, we're re-present, re- representing the ordinance to you guys with a couple of language changes in it and, and some added definitions to better clarify, um, a couple of the questions you guys had last time. You guys have any questions or comments on it?
Very good.
I'd be happy to answer them for you. Or him, the smarter guy.
Other staff?
Just, uh, as a reminder, there was two parts of this, um, the ordinance that's in front of you today is, is, uh, as the captain mentioned, just cleaning up some of the language, uh, and then there is also the component with the STO. So the STO still, uh, is, um, okay the way that it was, it was changed. So I, I did just wanna make sure that you're all aware that, that there's no reason to revisit that particular item, but this item is, uh, the, the, obviously, the, the issue that needs to get addressed tonight.
Anything else? Nope, very good. Anything else from the citizens? Seeing none, I'd entertain, beg pardon?
You, you have to be a licensed driver to operate the vehicles.
Good question. Seeing any others? No, uh, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to adopt an ordinance to allow the operation of all-terrain vehicles, micro utility trucks, low-speed vehicles, golf carts, worksite utility vehicle, vehicles on certain city streets.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Shannon and seconded by Mr. Stevens. There's a lot of opportunity for that. Uh, questions, concerns, comments? We'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
Thanks, sir.
Notice the price of golf carts has gone up.
I didn't buy stock in it, I promise. Opening a golf start sore downtown.
We, we should have.
I'm gonna look at the vacant space Megan was talking about downstairs.
I, I should've talked to some of the Lake of the Forest folks over there, just to see where golf carts were running. I looked and it was, uh, uh, Eagle Peaks, my first car was only a third of that price.
Yeah.
It goes at more than twenty-five miles an hour.
I have a deep concern about the golf carts. Um, I know about these drivers, probably also know that ten, eleven-year-olds know where the keys can be found generally. And, um, and once one or two get on, then three or four are gonna get on, so I'm a, a bit concerned about that.
And now, no additional questions?
Uh, I just wanna be clear on something, as I read, it looked like, um, golf carts, et cetera, would, would not be allowed to cross Seven Highway because it's more than forty-five mile an hour.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Okay. That's what I, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, we, we, we specifically put that in there for that fact, cause that, crossing that intersection in a car can be extremely dangerous, let alone, you know, in a smaller vehicle is just not.
As I read it, one place it looked like you couldn't and another place looked like you could, and so I was just.
Yeah, K-seven completely is prohibited from operation of any of these vehicles and along with the other roadways that we discussed last time.
Which I believe is K-thirty-two from Seven Highway.
Correct.
East to the city limits and, uh, that's basically all of it, uh, or any other road over thirty-five miles an hour.
Correct.
I don't know of any in Bonner Springs other than that. But, um, so they'd be, they'd have to follow the speed limit. They'd have to be licensed drivers. The vehicle would have to be, uh, street legal, which includes if operated at night, proper lights.
Correct.
And, uh, during the day, if without turn signals or whatever, proper hand signals.
Correct.
And the, uh, that's pretty much the crux of it, right?
Yes.
Pretty much it. So people in the core area of Bonner Springs couldn't go to Walmart because they'd have to cross Seven Highway or go down K-thirty-two.
Essentially, anybody that lives east of Seven could then traverse to Walmart. Anybody west of Seven's not gonna be able to.
One question I had is those individuals in Lake of the Forest, uh, will they be, have to follow these same rules? Operating a golf cart on their roads?
Lake of the Forest is private property. They have their own rules.
Y- yes. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, uh, did we cover everybody? Everybody have a chance? Yep, vote please.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood? Wong?
Yes.
Motion passes.
About Stevens? He'll go, he'll vote yes.
Now the motion.
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate the attention to detail, so thank you very much. Uh, X, the next item, number seven, an agreement with the Center for Public Safety Management. You Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Billy Knaff, Chief of Police. Uh, coming to you today for a motion to approve an agreement with the Center of Public Safety Management for a comprehensive analysis of police services. Uh, this is a very comprehensive study of police operations that generally, uh, This is a very comprehensive study of police operations that generally exceeds that of law enforcement accreditation. The goal is to kind of come, be able to gather as much information as we can about the things that we're doing well, things we can work on, and opportunities for improvement in order to develop a more strategic plan to bring back to you, which will also help you all with budget preparations and making some of those hard decisions for police operations in the future.
Any other staff?
The only thing, there is a timeline that's included within the proposal, so that does generally fall in line, as the chief mentioned, with the budget process going into 2025. So this, this really will, will also, in addition to everything the chief had mentioned, be a power tool for the council in that conversation about the kind of the strategic direction of the police department and, and the prioritization of, of funding with, with these recommendations and this guide in place, so.
Any other staff? Citizens, questions or concerns? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an agreement with the Center for Public Safety Management LLC, CPSM, for comprehensive analysis of police services, and authorize the police chief to execute the agreement.
Second. So moved by Mr. Stevens and seconded by Mr. Shannon, and we'll start right here this evening. I think I haven't picked on you yet.
I really don't have any questions, but have, have you guys been able, any, any of the openings that needed to be filled? Are you guys pretty much full staff at this point in time?
We, we have one opening currently. We're accepting applications now. That's scheduled to close the seventeenth, and we have some good candidates that have already applied.
You know, sixty-two-year-olds?
Fifty-seven, maybe.
Ma'am?
Gee, I know I was going to ask you some questions, but you covered everything beautifully, and I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Just the, I think it's kind of needed. We're, as with everything, we're growing, new apartments, all the other things that are happening in town. Maybe it's the police department, other departments are all going to grow. We need to make sure we're at the top of our game, so I'm glad we do this and make sure we're doing things the proper way. Thank you.
Nothing else? Very good. Yes, I, I think this is very forward-thinking and appreciate your attention to professional details. Thank you. Seeing no, no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote please.
Wood?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Wong?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes, again. Times two.
Reeves?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very good. Completes the agenda for the new business this evening, and the next items are the reports, first of which, city manager's report. Sir?
Excuse me. As the chief alluded, we do have one open police officer position that will be open through the week. I did also want to mention in that vein that we are in the final stages of bringing on some of our first career firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, I think, are in there too. So that's a process that is, is underway, and I look forward to bringing them to a future council meeting to meet all of you and the community. I did also want to make mention, you may have already seen it on the street, but the SRO vehicle for the police department has undergone a little bit of a change that will now showcase a little bit more Bonner brave pride in that. So the rap of that is, is being changed to incorporate some of the district emblems and then things like that, as well as Officer Watson taking on a little bit more of an orange appeal with his uniform. So that's some good changes, and again, it's a good relationship we have with the school district there. Speaking of which, I, I do want to make mention, we are going to have at least two interns joining city staff as interns from the high schools. So these are interns at Bonner Springs High School. That'll, I believe, start in January, is that right? Megan's been very instrumental in, in getting this program started with the school to help bolster some of the communication efforts, social media outreach and the like. So they'll be in, in the office and then also working remotely. Is this not working? There it works. So we're looking forward to, looking forward to that. And then, I believe, oh, one final thing. There is, I just want to make mention, it has been brought up on a few different occasions, but there is a, a document that's being put together called Plan KCK. This is a comprehensive plan for the city of Kansas City, Kansas, but because of sort of somewhat of the overlap with the county, with the UG, this does have some impact on, on county services too. So I, I have been working with Gunnerhand, the director of planning, to kind of go through that, that plan and make sure that at least, you know, where we can be integrated or should we be integrated and asking those types of questions. In particular, there is an economic development strategy plan that's part of that that, again, is, is going to have an impact on, on this community. So I do want you to know that that is out there. I believe there's actually a presentation on, tonight, with the Board of County Commissioners going over that. So if you are interested, please review that, take a look at that. If you do have any questions, please reach out to me, and I'm, I'm happy to either answer them or get answers to those questions. So that is all I have this evening.
Very good. Leads us to city council items, and we'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
Actually, I had two things. Sean, the Metro Street patching, is it the December? The possibilities of it definitely getting closed.
Yeah, I know there, initially, there was some issues with weather. Rain was, was what the delay was. I think now with the holidays coming up too, I think that has a little bit of their, an impact. But as I kind of look favorably at the weather forecast, I am hopeful that the asphalt plants do stay open, so that is something that can get done. But again, we are working through that. I know Matt Beetz has, has been in contact with the contractor quite a bit to just make sure that if we can get that done before, before December, certainly by the, by the end of the year if possible, but that's certainly on the top of our list.
The other thing, just with a lot of stuff that's been happening today in our world, you know, police and everything. The other day, Jan and I were coming home, and I noticed on one hundred and thirty-fourth Street, there were, there was about three or four cars, and they were stopped. And there was a young, young kid on the sidewalk that was kind of on the side of the walking trail in the middle of the street and everything like that. And as I got closer, Officer Kelly, our department, was literally walking down one hundred and thirty-fourth Street, controlling the traffic and putting himself at risk, but to, and walking alongside of the man. The boy looked like eight, seven or eight, and he, as far as I was concerned, he went far above protecting not only the child, but putting his life out there to make sure that nothing happened to that child. And I did want to bring this to, to his attention, and I will be getting on their website to offer him a definite praise because it's, we've got a good police department, we've got a good fire and ambulance and everything. I'm so proud to be a part of this town, and it's, it does my heart good when I see this. He was, he backed far, I think the man was to walk the mile, you know, protecting it. And anyway, just want to bring that up, and then chief will be forward and analyze that.
I'm here.
Kudos to the police department. Just from my personal experience, there were some recent stuff that's come up. Everybody that's been involved with something that I needed some assistance on has been incredibly professional, and I've seen some really good results given you guys' participation in that. So it's kind of like a holistic thing that's going on in Bonner. So we're, Chris, most of the people that's going to be living over here will probably be like younger professionals and stuff, so just, so with that, I think that as we put new windows over here, these, these folks like to work out, right, for the most part? And eat pizza too, I guess. But any rate, as we, right, enhance the aesthetics of our facility, community center, the park that, right, the center park that we're looking at doing, I think that's incredibly timing, good timing and so forth. I just think that everything's just kind of coming together, which is, which is really, really good for Bonner. I've been here since eighty-six. Some, some of you guys have been here longer than I have, right? So, and I met my wife when that was in the IGA, and she was a junior in high school. So when the sweeto's on there, now it's just a parking lot. But my, my point is, is that we're definitely going in the right direction. Sean, I thank you for all that your investment, staying with a small town like Bonner, right? There's been some really great decisions that's came from you and, and council all together way before I even came on, Jeff, and all the stuff that you've done too. So as we continue to move forward, I, I'm excited about the golf cart thing. We'll just have to get used to it, right? And, right? Change, change is hard and stuff like that. And Chris, I was not slight at you by any means, I was just, we can talk to Tyler about that. But my point is, is that everything that's so far from what I seen in.